Morning, everybody. We'll get started this morning. Today is Monday, January 7th, 2013. Happy New Year to everyone. It's our commission meeting for administrative complex board meeting. First item that we have on the agenda this morning, I'd like to ask everybody, please, to turn off any communication devices or put them on vibration. So we can have that quiet, please. First thing on our agenda this morning is Economic Development Committee. And I'll start with Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items this morning. First one, obviously, is good news. We have an opportunity to approve additional jobs today from a project that we had talked about a couple of weeks ago. At this time, we need to have a discussion of resolution designating Project Breeze as qualified target industry for Florida Tax Refund Program and Brownfield Redevelopment Bonus Refund Programs pursuant to applicable state statutes based on creating 200 jobs instead of original projection of 100 jobs. There's quite a bit of backup material on this project, but I would ask Shannon Ogletree to come forward at this time and give us an overview of the request.
Good morning. Shannon Ogletree, Santa Rosa County EDO. Yes, as Commissioner Salter was, is correct, this project we first brought to the county back in December. The company has relooked at their job creation, and instead of 100 jobs created over the course of one year, looking at 200 jobs created over the course of three years. The state requires us to pass a resolution supporting QTI in the form of our 20% match, which is the $120,000. And we're also asking for the passage of the Super QTI, which is the Santa Rosa County's incentive program for this company also. All incentives won't be paid out until the company creates their jobs. So after year one and the job creations there, incentives would be paid out from the local and state. And they also are, we're working through negotiations now for the oil spill dollars.
Any questions of Shannon? Hearing none, I would move approval for this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second item is discussion of replacement of signage at the industrial park in Peter Prince Airport. You have backup information on both of these signs. Each one of them's about, I have this written down, total will be about $30,000 for both of the signs, which would include potential lighting of those signs. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cole. I talked to Mr. Walker about this and liked consideration of a third sign, which would be at East Milton Road, to indicate two things. One, the complexes that we have out there, but also that is an east entrance for the industrial park. So folks like Hackney, Pro Built, or Driver Training Academy really, you know, would receive more benefit, I believe, from having a third sign out there. And this would give symmetric symmetry to all three of our entrances that we have in East Milton. We've been able to create and get finished with the Red Brick Road or close to finishing the Red Brick Road, resurfacing project out there. And I think in an effort to just look at all our properties in East Milton, as folks come in and out of our county, it'd be nice to have that third sign there and have all three of our properties identified as such. I think there'd also be some savings, as indicated in the backup, from a third sign, from sign crafters and some slight cost savings in three signs instead of just the two.
Any further discussion by the board? Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question as to the lighted part. He said for adding lights, it would be $632 addition per sign. I want to know, is there power available at those sites now to light the signs, or would that have to be, that would be another additional cost?
There will be the additional costs, at least on one, maybe two of them. We do have the power, I do know, at Peter Prince, because we have an automated gate at that location, and there's a meter there. And then, not certain on the two going into Industrial Boulevard and East Milton Road.
I want to bring that to light, because that would be an additional cost for a sign that would add to the total cost. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Roger, if you would, could you give us a projected cost on the lighting between now and Thursday?
We will. We'll get your total on that, sir. We may just need to talk with Commissioner Williamson briefly after the meeting, man.
All right. Any further discussion? At this time, I would move both, well, all three of these potential signs to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Item number one under Administrative Committee is discussion of floodplain variance for the Navarre Beach Sea Turtle Conservation Center Incorporated located at 8740 Gulf Boulevard, Navarre Beach. Your backups in your folders. Mr. Walker, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as you see the information from Ms. Rawls and Mr. Gomillion on this, the, when these structures were built by the state prior to Hurricane Ivan, we didn't have the floodplain requirement. It is, it is on the books now. Our recommendation, there's a waiver provision set up in there, our recommendation would actually be to go ahead and grant that waiver. And when we had traded with Mr. Williamson, who is out of Pensacola, that's the architect on that project, as he had pointed this out. So this is just a matter that we need to conclude. Frankly, for the original Phase 1, this isn't even required. It would be required ultimately if they're able to proceed to build out, which they, at least in their subsequent phases, if you will.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On the existing floodplain, I think with the new rules and regulations, it would be 2.67 feet lower than what we have now, if I'm doing math correct. That's not, that's not really, you know, that much really of a difference. And also, I think a lot of the new part's going to be to do with the tanks and all for the turtles and things like that. So I personally don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, and that was, and that was I, too.
Well, good project, so. Hearing no other comments or questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it moves to Thursday. Item two, discussion of proceeding with development, construction of Baghdad Mill Site Project. Back up in your book on this and quite a long history. Sheila, are you here today? Sheila Harris? Okay. If any members of the board have questions or comments from Ms. Harris on the...
As you'll notice from reading, Ms. Harris is, information, which really was well put together on that, but she does note that they've got a substantial amount of funding on the project, but it is predicated on the county forces doing a large part of the work, which most of the work is going to be the type of work that we can do as far as site work, those type things. That one, we will need to get with Mr. Whitfield and Ms. Harris and then try to figure out what that means, as far as what kind of effort that's going to take. I mean, that's going to obviously take away from some of your other work. Again, as I've mentioned in the past, this is a made-for-nerd type of project. I mean, it would be, I know we want to hurry up and do it, but I mean, it's, there's going to be other, there will be other sources of funds, I believe, available, but it'll be up to the board. We'll get you, we'll get you a, if you're interested in pursuing this, we'll get the number from Mr. Whitfield on some kind of estimate.
That was my question. The way that it's set now, the budget for the Phase 1 was, I think, $436,210. And from the costs that are there, that would only leave like $21,200 that could be applied to the reimbursement for equipment and labor costs to Roden Bridge Department. I just want to make sure that we're covered there, don't have costs that exceed that a great amount.
Just to clarify, there have been very preliminary discussions with Stephen Furman, and I believe he's also discussed this with Avis. The construction estimate that you have here is based on estimates that have been provided by Roden Bridge, and I do agree it's very close, but I'm pretty sure Stephen does a fairly conservative job when he estimates. And if we're given the authorization to move forward, we would be very careful in that we don't overextend, I guess, the money that we have and try to get cost savings where we can.
Mr. Chairman. Sheila, have we taken this project and applied for any of the NERTA grants so far? Also, there was another round of grants about a month ago where several grants were awarded to different locations for different reasons, but one of the main reasons was tourism. I know Pensacola received quite a few. Our TDC down in the south end did. I think one of the projects was one of the nature trails. Have we looked at this project as a potential second-round grant project?
Yes. In fact, there was a note in one of the backup items. It was on page two of the document, Phase 1 Construction Plan Summary. We actually, under NRDA, put in a request for the approximate amount of $878,000. The request was limited to the water features, the pier, connector dock, kayak launch with parking and boardwalk. And we felt like, in lieu of asking for a multimillion-dollar project that would fund the entire site construction, that we may be best to only request those human-use items. In my opinion, that was the best way to go. And in fact, we have recently gotten indication that this particular project that would fund these water features has made it to DEP's recommended list of what they're trying to get through the council. Specific to NRDA, they've made two announcements, and they are trying to get a third announcement made, hopefully within this year, that would expend a great portion of the remaining $90 million. So I'm very hopeful that this NRDA request would come through, but I just didn't feel like putting all our eggs in one basket and hoping that NRDA would come through for the entire site project was a good idea. I think we've got good momentum for the site. Even though the grants that we have awarded are small, they're there, and we just, we just need to keep plugging away. And I feel like getting a start on the project would put us in a better place to draw down even more funds from these different pots. There's still lots of future phase improvements, including buildings, bathrooms, that we don't have money identified for. So perhaps some of these other funding sources would come into place then. With regards to the tourism, I believe it was also specific to seafood promotion. When I looked at that opportunity, I didn't feel like it was, it was a good one for this park. So I did not apply under that tourism seafood promotion that was, that you referred to.
Again, I'm not sure about the second round or a possible third round, but we need to go, we need to make sure that we're not leaving money on the table, per se. Because I know over in Pensacola, they had several award for like St. Michael Cemetery, different things that they use to promote tourism. So I would think this project certainly would be equal or, if not greater, to help promote tourism in Santa Rosa County, especially the Milton area. It's something we'll make sure we don't lose sight of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Later, we discuss some of the Restore Act things, and one of the items in there is this flow of oil spill funds in the state of Florida. And it, it looks more like the instructions for a Chinese fire drill, so Sheila, lots of luck in keeping track of where the money goes. All right. So I'll move that to Thursday's agenda and do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item three is discussion of use of Navarre Beach Park for the 29th Annual Fun Fest sponsored by the Navarre Beach Area Chamber of Commerce, April 26th and 27th, 2013, and a Taste of Navarre Sunday, April 28th, 2013. I'll move that to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just make one quick, quick change, and Commissioner Melvin had pointed this out to me, is, and I verified it with the Navarre Chamber, is the request for the Taste of Navarre is actually for the Navarre Park, which is on US 98 there. The Nature Walk Park, it's not in the form of state park. So I'll make that change for Thursday's agenda.
All right. Noting that change, I'll move it to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item four is discussion of contract with Contact Intelligence Incorporated for executive recruitment services for Director of Economic Development Office. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is that, is that agreement. I believe the amount ended up being $15,250 for those services. And we've worked with Contact Intelligence, the county attorney and I, and then she's caught and put together the contract, and we would recommend moving forward with it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll move it to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item five is discussion of joint resolution of disproportionately impacted counties regarding allocation formula for funds received under the Restore Act. And either Mr. Walker or Commissioner Lynch, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This deals with the allocation formula for the 75% of the funds that are directly allocated to the states. Back in the, when the Restore Act was initially being considered, the version that came out of the Senate, included an allocation formula that was identical to the one we're adopting today, or that we're considering today, with the exception that instead of 20% distributed equally among the eight counties, it was 10%. When the bill went to conference, the allocation formula for the eight disproportionately impacted counties was pulled out of the Restore Act. So the final version did not contain any guidance or direction with regard to how the 75% of the state share that goes to the eight directly proportionally, disproportionately impacted counties would be distributed. You know, how do you divide it up among the eight counties? That language was stripped out. And it was Congressman Sutherland, he had some reservations about how the shares were going to be distributed to the smaller counties, you know, Franklin in particular, Wakulla, Gulf. Because based on the formula, their share was very small. They have small populations, very removed from the side of the spill. Nonetheless, they're heavily dependent on the seafood industry. So he felt that because of that, their shares needed to be increased somewhat. Working with the eight counties over the past, I guess, seven or eight months since Restore has been law, we've tried to come up with a formula that would be suitable and acceptable to Congressman Sutherland and the eight counties. This is where it landed. Again, it's the identical formula, but instead of 10% being distributed equally among the eight counties and then applying the weighted average of miles of shoreline, population, et cetera, it's 20% of the total that goes equally to the eight counties. And I think seven of the eight counties, when we had a meeting back in November, seven of the eight counties voted affirmatively to approve this. The only holdout was Franklin. They didn't, they abstained. And I'm not sure, I haven't heard that they have taken this up yet, but this will be coming before their commission as well. And the goal is to adopt this resolution. It has the approval of Congressman Sutherland and then send it back to Treasury when they're issuing the regulations, promulgating the regulations for interpretation and implementation of Restore.
Mr. Chairman.
We haven't had a chance to discuss, Angie, that model I built, was that relatively accurate when reducing the words to numbers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I built a model that we'll have available when we, when we know the exact number of dollars available. If you would just plug it in the top, it'll dump a number out the bottom that will be a Santa Rosa County number, so we can use that to plan against as we go.
Melvin's talking about, on your flow chart, that was one of the benefits of that, is it just kind of shows you that based on whatever the amount that we receive, is it's kind of how much trickles down to us, and it's really going to be very helpful. And, you know, obviously, the, your Restore Council will need that, then you can start planning on how you attack that, if you will.
It just takes that English and reduces it to numbers and runs it through a spreadsheet. So if you put the dollars in the top, it'll flow out the bottom and show you what your planning number will be.
Mr. Chairman, I eagerly look forward to something that explains it. Because right now, I don't know what's been approved that will eventually work its way to each county versus what's going where. So hopefully, simplicity will occur at some point in time.
Because like I said earlier, it looks like the instructions for a Chinese fire drill right here. You know, normally, when you start a chart and things start flowing down, the arrows keep going down, and then they go this way and this way. Good luck, Commissioner Lynch. Just let us know what, you know, what the deposit's going to be. All right. Any other comments, questions? If not, then we'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. And you think we'll know by Thursday maybe a little more about Franklin?
I'm not sure what their meeting schedule is.
Okay. Thank you.
I know that in some of the discussions with the Association of Counties, is I believe their target, and I don't think that includes where Franklin fits into that, but I believe their target is by the, by the fourth week of this month, that should get everybody, because some have already passed it.
All right. Item number six, discussion agreement with City of Milton regarding operation of Optimus Park. Mr. Walker.
Chairman, this is just the, I believe it was in November or so, you'd asked the county attorney to develop some kind of agreement with the city for that facility, and we've done that, and this is our recommendation.
All right. Any other comments, questions? If not, we'll move that to Thursday without objection. Item number seven, the discussion of Florida Division of Emergency Management for Hurricane Isaac Federal Funded Public Assistance Agreement. And you got the FEMA documentation number there, the end of that for you? Any comments, questions? Mr. Walker, Mr. Gomillion, either?
This is just the, this is just your public assistance agreement with the state, essentially dealing with the 75% reimbursement, or the reimbursement from FEMA and the state on damages from Isaac.
Hearing no other questions, I'll move that to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item eight is a public hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Thursday, January 10th, 2013. It's an application and resolution to the Florida Department of Transportation for three replacement vehicles in support of transportation disadvantaged door-to-door public transportation program. We'll discuss that on Thursday, and I'll move that without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Next item on today's agenda is our engineering report. Mr. Blaylock, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item, number one, is a discussion of the amendments to the US 98 resurfacing agreements with FDOT. The first one is the eastern segment, which is through Navarre. As you know, we had entered into agreements to provide eight-foot paved shoulders on that portion of US 98. The first segment is from the zoo to the Navarre Beach causeway. The figure you see there, $365,566, is a reduction from the $558,699 in the original agreement. And then in agreement two, the $792,971 is reduction, I mean, is in the original, and that was reduced to $722,759. These are current estimates, and this will lock in our contribution to the projects. The first project, the Navarre segment, will be bid in March of this year, with the western segment being bid in July of this year. And money's for this will be coming from our impact fee fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Blaylock and Mr. Walker and myself discussed the, this earlier. If we could, maybe by Thursday, get an update on the amount remaining in the impact fee fund.
Certainly.
After these estimates are taken away. We had about $2.8 million or so in that fund, and that is, those dollars expire at some point because they're impact fee dollars, and that expiration starts in 2013. I think Mr. Blaylock feels confident that we're, we're good right now. We're not going to lose anything because of the amounts that we've expended already and the amounts scheduled for expenditure on Highway 98. But if we can just get that, get that figure updated.
We certainly will.
Other comments, questions?
Item number two is the discussion of the bids received for the East Penciled Road safety improvements. Those bids were received, and we're recommending Panhandle Grading and Paving in the amount of $155,410.
Comments, questions? If not, I'll move those, forgot to do number one, so I'll move it to Thursday without objection. I'll move number two to Thursday without objection.
Item number three, we have a discussion of the final pay application to brown construction for the Harrison Avenue drainage project. That was Attachment C, and your backup. We had approved change order number one initially, and this was a unit price contract, and this final pay application represents a figure of $1,264 of unsuitable material, as highlighted in the yellow there, resulting in an additional $31,094. This final pay request represent that, and we're asking for approval for project closeout and payment.
All right. Comments? Comments? Hearing none, I'll move it to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it moves. Item number four.
Item number four, we have a discussions of change order number two and three for the Pace Community Center closeout. Change order number two is in the amount of $7,556.05. This was the amount that we had taken out through our purchase, direct purchase process in the form of PO. No monies were drawn on that PO, and the contractor requesting a credit back for that amount, and that is in order. And then, the second one is for the additive changes for the tap fee associated with the, I apologize, make that a, the six-inch building address letter had to be on before the CO was applied, and then tapping into a 12-inch reclaimed water main, and then the Knox box for the fire department. That's where a key is inside, so that the fire department can enter the building, totaling $1,432.90. And we'd recommend change orders number one and two, and close out the project.
All right. Hearing no comments, questions, I'll move that to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is a discussion of the drainage easements for the Five Point Intersection Project for a portion of the drainage from Woodbine Road to the Vinewood Pond, if I can have my computer projected. Orienting this, the north is to the right. Here is Five Points Interchange, here the existing interchange. One of our additive alternates was an improvement to the Santa Rosa County Vinewood Pond right here. We have just a prescriptive easement with just an existing ditch, if you will, graded ditch through this cotton field. The owners, when we approached them, had asked us to consider and bring to the board consideration to either concrete line the ditch or pipe the ditch such that the equipment could plow across the field without having to go drive through our ditches to get around that existing swell. The equipment will not go through the existing ditch. I have received that, those numbers, and the figures that we have using the existing units from our existing contract was 60,800 to do concrete ditch paving, 69,250 to do 36-inch pipe, and put the appropriate number of inlets within the field such that his field would actually drain to it, so we wouldn't flood the field and onto the roadway, that the pipe would actually drain the field, which is, the ditch is currently doing as well. I reviewed this with Avis with Roden Bridge, and we would recommend option two for the piping of the ditch if the board were agree, would agree with that. Funding for this portion will be 75 percent from the DOT, 25 percent match from the county's Roden Bridge Drainage Funds.
Questions or comments from board members?
I got a question for you. If we piped it, and it's used to drain that cotton field, the means of keeping the silt and stuff out of the ditch and then causing more of a maintenance problem on the?
We would do it, we would do it very similar to how we've done our EWP projects, which is the cage over the inlets with the concrete swells, such that he would fill and farm around it, and just would be periodically taking that vegetated debris from that screen. We have a similar structure located right here that was being replaced and upgraded in this project that does the same thing, but it's within our ditch. However, we had to address consideration that runoff into that field's going to Vinewood Pond now through the ditch, and we'd have to make considerations for inlets as well.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll move that to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes.
And then, item number six is a discussion of the minimum airport standards for Peter Prince Field. I put this as a placeholder. We had not received feedback from Hatchmont-McDonald, and we will either include this for Thursday for a discussion, or we will move it to the next agenda. But I just wanted a placeholder here. As you know, Santa Rosa County drafted back in 2005, '06 timeframe some minimum standards. We're having Hatchmont-McDonald review those for compliance with our current master plan update. And so, we'll either take action Thursday or two weeks hence. And that completes the engineer's report.
We'll hold that place till Thursday. All right. Next on our items this morning, our Public Service Committee, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have five items. Item number one is discussion of agreement for state homeland security grant in the amount of $14,200, and authorization for the chairman to sign all related documentation. There is no match requirement. There's backup in your agenda. Mr. Gomillion, do you want to add anything to this?
No, sir. These will be a continuation, both of these, one and two, will be continuations of grants we've applied for for a number of years and received, in most cases for planning and exercises and supplies.
Unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of agreements for Citizen Corp. program in the amount of $8,625, and authorization for the chairman to sign all related documentation, and there is no match requirement. Unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of the ship second mortgage subordination request for the property located at 5932 Ashton Woods Circle. Again, there's backup in your materials. Unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is discussion of application for Section 5310 grant for the purchase of three replacement vehicles and authorization for the chairman to sign all related documentation. There's a local match requirement of $19,020. There's backup in your materials. Unless there are any questions, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item five is discussion of, excuse me, discussion of abatement bid process for the following properties. 1865 Anderson Avenue in Gulf Breeze, 5857 Capital Drive Gulf Breeze, 9061 Eagle Nest Drive in Navarre, 4525 Gaynor Avenue in Milton, 4136 Molina Street in Navarre, 2060 Presidio Street Navarre, 4205 Sixth Avenue in Pace, and 2251 Tom Street in Navarre. I'll move these to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you.
Oh, go on forward.
Jerry Lehman.
If you would, push the button, please, speak.
Jerry Lehman, L-E-H-M-A-N-N, representing Regions Bank, interested in the property at 4525 Gaynor Avenue. We are the first mortgagie on that property. We are looking at this point, the property is in foreclosure, filed in October of 2011. We are looking into our insurance options at this time to repair the property or for demolition. We've been in touch with Mr. Tompkins. We would request an extension of time in order to find what, decide what remedy we want to take for this property.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones, is there any problem with granting an extension on this particular abatement?
No, sir. I would be curious to know if there's a final hearing set on the foreclosure.
Ms. Jones, there is not a final hearing at this point. The lawsuit was filed in October of 2011. There's been some issues in terms of adding, many of the complaint and adding defendants that haven't been served yet. So, we're in that process. There has been a motion for summary judgment filed in this case, but it has not been set for hearing until we get our service completed.
And if I may, how much time would you need to make that determination?
This is, this is an investor-owned, securitized mortgage. Therefore, once we make our decision, we're going to have to send that up to the investor for final approval. We have already been working on this. We've known about this for 60 days at this point. We'd like to ask the commission for 60 days.
60 days? I don't have any problem with that. If I could, I will amend the previous motion to delete that particular address from the list of abatement properties. Without objection.
Noting Commissioner Lynch's removal of property at 4525 Gaynor Avenue in Milton, I'll move it without objection. Hearing none, it passes. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. Our next is Public Works Committee, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item today, discussion scheduling a public hearing on the proposed vacation of the alleyway between lots nine, 10, 11, and 12, and lots 13, 14, 15, and 16 of Block 667 in the Avalon Beach subdivision. Mr. Whitfield, in your backup, has expressed that Roden Bridge Department has no significant need for this alleyway, so unless there's further discussion, I recommend that we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Our next up is Commissioner Melvin with Budget Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a total of 19 items, items 17, 18, and 19 have been added there in the front of your book, and we will cover those when we get to them. Item number one is discussion of bids received for the advertisement of delinquent tax list. Low bidder meeting specifications is Santa Rosa Press Gazette with a bid of 27 cents per line. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is discussion of bids received for the abatement project located at 6228 Bryce Street in Milton. Low bidder meeting specifications is Sessions Construction Services with a bid of $2,800. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is discussion of bids received for the abatement project located at 4336 Milton Road in Milton. Low bidder receiving, low bidder meeting specifications is Sessions Construction Services with a bid of $2,400. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is discussion of bids received for the abatement project located at 4023 Raven Street in Milton. Low bidder meeting specifications is Sessions Construction Services with a bid of $2,100. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is discussion of bids received for the abatement project located at 5456 Spruce Street in Gulf Breeze. Low bidder meeting specifications is Sessions Construction Services with a bid of $4,800. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six is discussion of bids received for the abatement project located at 6016 East Bay Boulevard in Gulf Breeze. Low bidder meeting specifications is Sessions Construction Services with a bid of $2,400. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven is discussion of budget amendment 2013-67 in the amount of $897,200, which will carry forward MSBU Fire District fund balance and distribute $700,000 for the Baghdad Volunteer Fire Department building, and the remaining $197,200 for reserves for contingency. And I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number eight is discussion of budget amendment 2013-68 in the amount of $23,840 to fund the contract with the BLCC approved 121312 with Pegasus Engineering to develop an HMGP grant application for the Settlers Colony Drainage Improvement Project and the Roden Bridge Fund. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number nine is discussion of budget amendment 2013-69 in the amount of $91,366, which will transfer funds from the Capital Projects Fund to a computer support for replacing the remainder of the legacy telephone PBX exchanges with Cisco voice-over IP system under the State of Florida Suncom contract. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 10 is discussion of budget amendment 2013-70 in the amount of $10,500, which will carry forward funds for the building renovation design required by the Navarre Beach Sea Turtle Conservation Center and the Tourist Development Fund. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 11 is discussion of budget amendment 2013-71 in the amount of $40,000, which will carry forward funds for payment of settlement agreement in the Hendricks v. Santa Rosa County litigation in the Self-Insurance Fund. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 12 is discussion of budget amendment 2013-72 in the amount of $109,291, which will carry forward prior year excess recording department fees to complete image index project in that department in the general fund, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 13 is discussion of budget amendment 2013-73 in the amount of $205,000, which will reverse a budgeted debit proceed and associated accounts as a bank loan, as the bank loan was not obtained. The emergency repair of Woodbine Springs Dam will be loaned from the Roden Bridge at 4% interest for 4.25 years. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 14 is discussion of budget amendment 2013-74 in the amount of $22,825, which recognizes the Citizen Corp., $3,085, and CERT $4,321 grants, allocates those grants for expenditure, recognizes the Homeland Security Grant, and allocates that one for expenditure, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 15 is discussion of budget amendment 2013-75 in the amount of $769,500, which will carry forward funds for a change order as approved by the 121312 Board Meeting for the Navarre Bridge, Navarre Beach Bridges rehabilitation, this being the Roden Bridge Fund. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 16 is discussion of county expenditures and check register. I reviewed those expenditures in the register. Mr. Chairman had signed off on them, placed them on your desk. I recommend we move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 17 is a separate piece of paper, and it was contained in the front flap of your handout, and it's budget amendment 2013-76 in the amount of $6,560, which will be for Section 5310 Transportation Disadvantaged Program grant, vehicle replacement, local match from reserves, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 18 is budget amendment 2013-77 in the amount of $14,025 for four sets of aluminum bleachers for Tiger Point Recreational Facility, and that'll be coming from District Five Recreation Funds. I recommend that we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And finally, item number 19 is budget amendment 2013-78 in the amount of $2,228 for the installation of two 1,500-watt sport lights at the Navarre Soccer Complex, which will come from District Four Recreation Funds, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Melvin. We got any further comments from county administrator, county attorney, county engineer? Any moneybags? Anybody down this side? Anybody from the general public have comments, questions? If not, we are adjourned.